Listen, I know you're worried. Don't forget that.
Sorry, girl.
Spatter?
Yeah, yeah.
Spatter isn't the ultimate or personal. You see, that's what I'm talking about. Right here. About to do it there? Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That was on? Yeah, any pedestrian, the traffic right here. I don't want to spoil it. Tony, I need a favor. Alderman Burnett has a folder on his desk. Manila folder. Can you put it on Alderman's desk for traffic and pedestrians? Uh, no, the stanchions, these seats are unavailable. Please find the seat where you do not see a sign. If you see a sign, that seat is unavailable.
What, what about these?
These seats are unavailable. There are some seats on the far end down there.
The council will come back to order for my recess. Uh, please use the e-vote application to record your presence at this time. And as you do that, there is breaking news. This city council meeting is being recorded live from Naperville.
The voting is now open. Please log into your device. Please hit the submit. The voting is now open. If you have any, need any help or assistance, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. Alderman Beal needs some assistance, or he's in. I will now call on those who have not voted yet. Alderman Robinson, not present. Alderman Hall, present. Alder, Alder Person Moore, Alderman Moore, not present. Alderman Curtis, not present. Alder Woman Taylor, not present. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is present. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Alderman Sichu Lopez is present. Alderman Fuentes, Alder Woman, Alder Person Fuentes, present. Alderman Walter Burnett, not here. Alderman Talafaro, present. Alder Woman Ruth Cruz, present. Alderman Riley, not here. Alder Woman Clay, not present. Did I miss anyone? Oh, Alderman Curtis is now present. Alderman Riley is now present. Alder Woman Clay is not present. Curtis is here and Riley's here. Curtis is here and Riley's here. Yeah, and Riley's here. Yeah, all right. The voting is now closed. Forty-five five.
Okay, there are forty-five members present. Uh, we do have a quorum. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Rabbi Leonard Ottenky of congregation K.I.N.S.
Eloquino Veloquevutenu, our God and God of our fathers, as we stand here today before you at the beginning of a new administration which represents an exciting new opportunity to serve the people of this great city, we ask that you bestow your kindness and your goodness upon the great city of Chicago and all who have sworn their allegiance and commitment to the government and the people they serve. May you grant our new mayor, the Honorable Brandon Johnson, the continued wisdom, understanding, and courage to address the diverse needs of all of our communities and all of the residents of this city. Offer him the strength to fulfill the dreams of the people he now serves and the patience to solve the challenges he will face. Almighty God, as we, members of Chicago's great Jewish community, are about to celebrate the holiday of Shavuot, the moment when God revealed himself at Sinai, we remember the words of our ancestors who proclaimed, "Na'asev nishma." We will do and we will obey, words that recall and echo our city's motto of "I will." In the words of our ancient prayers, "Hano ten shualla melachim," may the one who grants salvation, courage, and strength to governments, who placed a road through the sea and a path in the mighty waters. May the Almighty bless our mayor, this council, and all who faithfully serve our communities. Sustain them and protect them and continue to grant them the understanding to lead us in righteousness and truth, so that this city, the greatest city in the land, be a beacon of morality and values, a city which looks forward to the future and makes a difference in the lives of all who live within its boundaries. May this be thy will and let us all say amen.
Amen.
Please be seated.
Alderman Moore is now present.
All right, uh, this is the time of the agenda for a public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Natasha Dunn.
Natasha Dunn is not present.
Our next speaker today is... Could you please, could you please step to the mic on the right side of the chamber?
Hi. Hi, my name is Natasha Dunn and I'm a resident of the South Shore community. I'm also the founder of, co-founder of the Black Community Collaborative. And I'm here today to, one, welcome you, Mayor Brandon Johnson, and also to say that our community is very disheartened at how this migrant crisis has been handled. We are very concerned about the fact that our community has been dealing with so much trauma, so much heartache over the past couple of decades. And we don't feel like the city council or our representatives who are supposed to represent us are doing a great job at it. We have had so many youth dying on the streets of Chicago. Our community don't want that. We work hard every day to improve the conditions of our community. Most of us in the Black community work part-time, full-time, volunteering, and we just don't feel like we're getting enough support to ensure that our communities are safe. And not only that, that we have the economic opportunities that we deserve to, to be able to be successful in our community. So therefore, we're here, and it's a group of us that are here. We're here today because we want our aldermen to vote no for that fifty million to the migrants. And the reason why we say that is because of just what I said. We've been here for a long time and our issues are not being addressed adequately. You could say we're giving billions of dollars for anti-violence. Clearly, it's not working. Rest in peace, all the, rest in peace, Officer Preston. Rest in peace, David Johnson. Rest in peace, so many children, so many people in our community. It's not working. Clearly, the money is going somewhere, it's not coming into our community. So therefore, we want to make sure that if there's gonna be any money that's gonna be voted on, that that money is redirected into the development in our community. Specifically, we want that building, Alderman Michelle Harris, that was promised, uh, South Shore High School, was promised to us years ago. We created plans. We sat there with the mayor, with you, with everyone. We want access to that school because that school is going to improve the conditions of our community. So today, we want you to vote yes for the Black community getting fifty-one million to improve our schools, to be able to improve the conditions of our entire community, and to end the violence. We need you to be on board. We are in a crisis. Because it's not effective, some of you all, maybe you don't understand it. But we feel it every day, I'm a mother. I'm scared for my children's lives. And I should not have to be. And I swear, I'm speaking for a lot of other mothers out here, including some of you aldermen that live in the Black community. So as a result, you better say no because we voted for you and we will vote you out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn, for your comments. Our next speaker is Linda Dowell.
Hi, good morning. Could you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Good morning. My name is Linda Del Boski. I'm the publisher and editor-in-chief of Chicago Latina Magazine. Good morning, City Council. Hello, Naperville from Chicago. And welcome, Mayor Johnson, to your first city council meeting. I'm excited to bring a new cuspa media to the Chicago area. I am excited as the only Latina, not Latino, Latina media outlet in Chicago representing first-gen Latina mothers, women, and most importantly, small business owners. The idea of this publication as the publisher of Evanston Woman Magazine came with, serving three years as a small business advisor for the state of Illinois, pre and post COVID, seeing the ratio of low-minority businesses receiving any type of resources, funds, grants, no matter if they're women, men, Black, Hispanic, Asian, were very small. Under state comptroller, First Latina, Susanna Mendoza, she's created a program to help small businesses become suppliers. Chicago has created relationships with big businesses behind closed doors that provide opportunity for small businesses to become suppliers. Bally's Chicago has no marketing or advertising plan for small suppliers, even though on their website it says they promise that community. Alderman, what are you gonna do about this? Are y'all gonna sit there and allow this to happen as they're watching a suicide, like a site, before they launch and embark their larger property? Do you realize that the number of vendors they have that are minority, who are women or men, Black, Latino, Asians, anything are very little right now and they have no marketing plans to help bring our small businesses to the forefront? NASCAR, same thing. We get Millers in the mail. I'm in the fourth ward. Lamont Robinson is my alderman. We get Millers about the track, oh, that's beautiful. But how about the suppliers? So they lie to you, but that's okay because y'all okay with them coming in here, but not bringing in small businesses. That's money being lost in Chicago and generational wealth being de-minimized. How do y'all live every day knowing this? Going to sleep. My name is Linda Del Boski with Chicago Latina Magazine. It is my priority to ensure that our small businesses are being represented and these large companies come and make these trade deals with you guys. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you very much, Ms. Del Boski, for your comments. Our next speaker is Pat Franklin.
Good morning, all. Good morning, all.
Good morning.
First, I want to welcome you all, welcome you, Mayor Johnson, and your newly-elected aldermen to Chicago. I wanted to grassroots lead at Chicago, I'm at CCH, which is Chicago Coalition for the Homeless. And the reason I'm here today is because we're trying to, get a steady stream of revenue while bringing Chicago Home Campaign. I think this is very important because everyone deserves housing and everyone deserves healthcare. And I think this will also be good if we had a steady stream because it will help the migrants that I study coming here. And if we address this issue, I think we can do both, help save Chicago, cut down a little crime, and everyone will be happy, especially me because it's not a good thing to be homeless in Chicago or anywhere else in this city. And I think we are a big, loving city that we can help everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Wallace Gator Bradley.
First of all, I want to say to God be the glory. New mayor, your platform that you ran on was multi-generational, multicultural, and enough for everyone in the city. I saw two stories that was on Channel Seven where the pinstripe patronage within the law department, that's private attorneys, is milking the city council or the city's budget for cases that they cannot defend. Twenty thirteen, I spoke before the finance committee in reference to individuals that's wrongfully convicted that's getting out. Later on, I believe it was twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen I spoke before the finance committee. As a matter of record, Burke was the chairman. Pat Dowell was a member of that finance committee. And I informed the city council what was happening then. Fast forward. We got a new mayor, a great mayor. I believe he's gonna be a great mayor of the city of Chicago. By God's grace and mercy, Pat Dowell is not just a member of the finance committee. She's the chairman of the finance committee. So I'm quite sure those concerns as far as getting rid of that pinstripe patronage, from what I saw on the news, where the city has spent a billion dollars to private attorneys for cases that they can't win, especially those that are wrongfully convicted and those that got certificates of innocence. Mayor, when you get your corporate council, I believe if you cut that budget that's going to those private attorneys, you would have money and won't have to raise taxes to help with the homeless and the migrants. Saving money. I'm not being there as no lobbyist. I'm just a registered voter. And I say to God be the glory, and I want to end with this. City council and the mayor, you're better than this.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley, for your comments. Our next speaker is Dixon Romeo.
Uh, first of all, yeah, I want to thank and welcome Mayor Johnson and the new administration. You know, this is a moment, I'm a long-term South Shore resident. Um, and I think this, Brandon's election, Mayor Johnson's election and all you all's election is a signifier that folks in the city need and want something different, right? Across the country, right, the politics are old, don't help folks, and in the city, they aren't helping folks. I mean, that's why folks voted for something different. Across the country, we're experiencing a housing crisis, right, which is being exacerbated by the humanitarian crisis of migrants being taken, uh, you know, sent from the state of Texas across to different cities. And Chicago is one of those cities. We're experiencing humanitarian crisis because the governor of Texas is treating people like political pawns, right? And forcing and creating conditions where we think we have to do an either-or game, right? Chicago's one of the richest cities on earth, right? But city halls historically tried to pit Black and Brown folks against each other. And we should not be divided by this and fight for crumbs. We should come together and fight for all the things that we need. Let's be super clear, right? Replicating harmful systems, replicating a system where it's zero-sum, replicating a system where one group has to win, lose for another group to win, isn't gonna make us more powerful, right? These migrants who are on buses coming to our communities, they have just as little power as us Black and Brown folks feel in our neighborhoods when we come to city hall. Fighting them is not gonna make us stronger, right? If we care about, I know personally what it feels like to be in the coroner's office and look at a loved one and know they were killed by community violence or by police violence. I know what it's like to stand in the county line and you trying to count pennies and help your mom pay a lien on her house so she can stay in her home. I've worked with tenants and community residents on the west side, on the southeast side, and South Shore, and know what it's like that people across the city are fighting for more. And so if we know we need more in our communities, we need to be here fighting for that. We know that we have a housing issues in South Shore. That's why we need the South Shore CBA, right? We know we have homelessness as a number-one issue in the Black community. That's why we need Bring Chicago Home. This administration can do that, and all of us need to come together and support them and push them to make sure that these things happen so we get the things we need instead of fighting against folks who don't have power. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romeo, for your comments. Our next speaker is Melba Brown.
Good morning, everybody, and God bless us, U.S., U.S. citizen. We, the people of the Neighborhood Network Alliance, we vote no to the fifty-one million dollars for the migrants in the South Shore High School. And this is why I am a resident of the twentieth ward. While I have empathy for the migrants, our priority should be the humanitarian crisis that Black citizens have suffered for generations. Why? Until the above disparities are addressed and Black residents are prioritized, we urge you to vote no for using fifty-one million dollars or any of our tax dollars to fund migrants and asylum seekers and housing them in neighborhoods still dealing with the impact of redlining drugs, poverty, violence, crime, and disinvestment. We want to, we want the immediate support of our city and state governors to address the systematic racism that created these disparities. We want the city of Chicago to create an office of Black Americans to focus on culturally, to respond to solutions and fund it allocated to re-notivate closed school builders to prove the value of our neighborhood. And this is why seventy-three percent of homeless citizens in Chicago are Black, with thousands of Black youth suffering and riding trains for shelters. Black families have the highest eviction rate. Seventy-seven percent of homes foreclosed due to taxes are in African-American neighborhoods. And this is why I say Black families have the highest eviction rate. I am a middle-class, living and feel like a low-class. I have an eviction. I have to get out of my condo. I have fifty-one more minutes, second. I have to get out of my condo on May the twenty-ninth Monday for the holiday. They have sixty thousand dollars fund to be used for condo associations, property taxes, and all of this, and I cannot get a help. I cry every morning. This is not about me, it's about us. I cry every morning. I live in the Woodline area, Sixty-third Street. I watch the migrants go up and down my street. And I cry. They are happy. And I just see their smiles and their happiness. You all done getting them cars, jobs, everything. I went to Jewel's and said, where's the pineapple? He said, I speak no English. I love anybody. I love America.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, for your comments. Our next speaker is Zith Sistrung.
Praises to God, to this great city council. Very rarely, Mr. Mayor, am I nervous. I am today. I am so elated for this moment. I've never had it. I was with you, Mr. Mayor, in Sox Park with these young men. Those of you who are not there, Peyton was on this side and Kenwood was on this side. So when Peyton hit a homerun and did something good, Mr. Mayor had to keep it together. And then when Kenwood do something good, Mr. Mayor again had to keep it together because he was representing all of the city. Mr. Mayor and the city council, some of you all know me and some of you all helped get elected to this office. I was a bad boy. My dad, play dad, saved the White Sox, Dick Allen. I was his bad boy in seventy-three and seventy-four. That's why so many memories came back when I saw these young men. I messed up when I was on my way to Shaw University, William North Carolina. I caught a case and went away for two years, six months. And God had a plan because there was a riot in Pontiac. Three guards got killed and a hundred and eighty inmates were injured, but God brought me through. Now, what brought me here today to address you, gentlemen? Because I need a favor from you and I need a favor from the mayor. I'm possibly could be receiving two million dollars from the Boy Scouts because I was part of that lawsuit. So when Cromie and Sokovich denied, and Cromie never said he was sorry, because I'm part of the Boy Scout and I know what those kids went through, and nobody said they were sorry because of what happened with these priests, four hundred of them? So what I'm calling on the city council to do, what I'm calling on Tony Preckwinkle to do, and what I'm calling on the governor to do, some of those four hundred names can go and do churches in other communities. I want us to make sure in the city council, Alderman Hall, Alderman Coleman, my cousin Curtis, Ms. Harris, Anthony Beal, Mr. Baseball. You didn't get these guys this time, Mr. Mayor, that's okay. The reason we need to look at the priests in this case because their names could be on some of those contracts. So if we review them, then we come with a clean bill of health. Because those two thousand children, nobody said they were sorry. Cromie didn't say it, and Sokovich didn't say it. Forgive me for messing his name up. The city council can say, in a sense, we reviewed it, we looked it over, and we're content with it. That's not asking too much. God bless you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sistrung, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jay Darnell Jones.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning to all of our esteemed elected officials. My name is Jay Darnell Jones. I am a twenty-four-year retired naval officer, Navy JAG officer, attorney, and also a diversity, equity, and inclusion professional that's worked in both corporate America and in the military over the last twenty-three years. Most recently, I served as a global director of diversity for a large commercial real estate firm that has a presence here in Chicago. I went to come today because I am a resident of South Shore. If all of you know what happened in South Shore over the last few weeks, so I don't... so I don't need to mention that. However, I am also one of the people who have decided to take a stand rather than to stand back and allow it to happen. So what I'm going to talk about today is diversity is supposed to be a thing that helps us all. It's great, it's wonderful. It helps us learn about each other, helps us appreciate our differences. However, it's not supposed to be used as a tool against the interest of black people. It is supposed to be something that not only brings our issues to the surface, but allows us to finally come together collectively to address those issues and concerns. My concern is that all other issues for other people who come to this country have been addressed and have, or are being addressed, and have some type of solution on the table for it. However, for us, it's consistently vote, 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 just vote. We vote blue no matter who, just vote, whatever the case may be. None of that is productive, or none of that has offered us any tangible outcomes thus far. What we'd like to see now happen is we'd like to see some money going to black communities. What about youth programs? I'll use South Shore High School as a perfect example of that. That school has a pool in it, a swimming pool. We know that the second-leading cause of death for adolescent black youth, aside from gun wounds, is drowning. Why don't we open that school back up for programs for our young black people who are at risk and make sure we offer them an opportunity to survive? Not just survive, but thrive and do what the rest of us are doing. We work hard in our community to make sure that we have the upstanding community that it's always been, and we expect it to remain that way, which is why we gave such pushback. We're not anti-immigrant at all. I think that there is so much space and opportunity in the United States that we should accept everyone, bring everyone here, but not at our expense as black people. I am willing, and I know my alderman, I hope to have a conversation with her, Alderman Harris, to work with you and offer my expertise in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and my legal expertise to help me come up with some solutions that's gonna drive that. We can't devalue black communities and offer support to others at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Yankovic.
Hello, Mary Ann Yankovic. I also go by Polly. I'm a resident of the 33rd Ward. I first moved to the city 20 years ago. I lived at 33rd and State. I watched the projects come down. 10 years ago, I watched the schools close. And I've seen the divestment in our black and brown communities across the city year after year. I'm here today to advocate for the people of Chicago, old and new. We are in the middle of a humanitarian crisis in one of the wealthiest cities in the world, and it is time for our elected officials to respond. We need to meet this crisis with a structured response for migrants and refugees entering our city, but we also need to address the crisis of disadvantaged communities across our city with things like Bring Chicago Home and Treatment Not Trauma. This is not an either-or situation. I've heard other people speak tonight or today and across the city at different meetings, but this isn't a situation where you pick one party and then choose the other to be disadvantaged. We can no longer make those decisions. This is a new administration. Everyone deserves housing, safety, and healthcare. The people of Chicago voted for care, not fear. And I challenge our elected officials and this new administration to respond decisively with care.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yankovic. Our next speaker is John Wayne Frye.
Hi. I'm with the 33rd Ward Working Families, and I can't believe that we're all here today. We united in Albany Park, young and old, black and white, brown, yellow, and red. All kinds of gender and sexuality, more than you can imagine. We all united, and we knocked on doors, and we re-elected Rosanna, and we elected Brandon. We did that not by fighting each other, but by uniting, joining together. Now, there are a lot of people outside that are yelling and screaming. They're pretty agitated by, I think maybe Fox News, something like that. But the truth is, unless your name is Running Bear or Flying Eagle, you're an immigrant, or you're descended from an immigrant. I'm looking around at the crowd, and some of us here, a lot of us here, can remember Malcolm X. And I wonder, what would Malcolm say? And I think he would talk about crabs in a bucket. We've got brown crabs trying to climb out of the bucket, and black crabs, and poor white crabs. They're all trying to crawl out of the bucket. And we're all being pulled down by each other. All we have to do is form a chain and climb over each other and out of that bucket and pull everyone else out. Now, there is an issue of $51 million for immigration. We need more than that, and we need a quarter of a million dollars. But we need money for the south side and the west side. The money is out there. Now, a lot of young people refer to it as the 1%. Old folks like me call it what it is, the white power structure. There are a lot of rich people out there, white, black, brown. There are a lot, there's a lot of money out there. And we can solve all these problems. We just have to unite.
Thank you, Mr. Frye, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment period. I am grateful to see so many individuals in this city council with three-piece suits. Congratulations to all of you, the three-piece suit caucus. Thank you, gentlemen. The chair recognizes Chairman Harris. Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a temporary move to temporarily suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of a series of procedural matters pertaining to the organization and the conduct of the city council for the 2023-2027 term.
Hearing no objections, sole order. Old Woman Harris.
Okay. The first item is a resolution offered on behalf of the body adopting the rules of order and the procedure of the city council for its 2023-2027 term. These proposed rules supersede any prior city council rules of order and procedure in effect in their entirety. If no one wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by a roll called vote.
Members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Oh, was there a hand? Okay. Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
I was hoping we could do this after the young men were introduced. This, you're doing this resolution based on the committees and chairs, Chairman? Is that what you're calling, is that the resolution you're calling?
There will be a series of motions.
Which one is this one, Chairman, so I can be clear?
This is the motion for the rules.
Just the rules?
Just the rules.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. No questions.
Did I miss anyone else? Thank you, Alderman Moore. Okay, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your device. If you have any issues, please raise your hand and we'll come over. Thank you, the voting is open. Hit refresh for you're on your tablet. I will now call on anyone who has not voted yet. Alderman David Moore. Not in chambers, not present. Alderman O'Shea. Not in chambers, not present. Alderman Burnett. Yes or no? Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Not in chambers. Alderman Wagaspack. Alderman Wagaspack is a yes. Sorry, my mind's not refreshing correctly. That's it, okay. You got it? The voting is now closed.
There are 47 yea votes and zero no votes. So the matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, a motion to reconsider the vote?
All those in favor say aye. All those that oppose say no. Okay? All right, so the motion fails. The council rules for 2023 to 2027 have been adopted. Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution offered on behalf of the body setting forth committee assignments for the standing committees of the city council for the 2023-2024 term. If no one wishes to speak to this item, I move passage by a roll called vote.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The chair recognizes Alderman Wagaspack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Look forward to saying that a few more times. Mr. President, four years ago, I was humbled to accept the leadership of the Finance Committee in the aftermath of one of the biggest machine corruption scandals in recent history. And with my staff, I immediately worked to restore trust in that office and ensure ongoing investigations had access to information they needed in the process of seeking justice, accountability, and transparency for the Committee on Finance. So working together with the city finance and budget teams, I'm proud that we had built a fiscal stability in the city not seen in years, leading to 13 credit rating upgrades and three positive outlooks since August 2022. Now, since my election in 2007, I've always been an insistent voice for aldermanic independence. From my early resistance to the parking